I call the need to order the Southern County zoning board of appeals. Today, the reason for our hearing is petition number 24-022. The applicant is South Union Illinois Solar LLC and requests for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. The address is 13409 Hemington Road, Huntley, Illinois. And the location, the property consists of approximately 118.88 acres and is located on the north and south sides of Hemington Road, adjacent to the intersection of Hemington and Minchin Road in Grafton Township, Illinois. There's two different PIN numbers associated with this application. They are 18-07-200-010 and 18-07-400-001. At this time, I'd like the members of the zoning board to introduce themselves and the township in which they reside, starting on my left.
William Kurnick, Grafton Township.
Robert Kosen, Elgakuin Township.
Mary Donner, Greenwood Township.
I'm Lanaya Cooster, Alden Township.
Nikki Gardner, Nanda Township.
Kurt Schnabel, Riley Township.
Thomas Jurz, Coral Township.
This petition has been reviewed and following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated April 24, 2024, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was April 27, 2024. The affidavit of mailing was signed and the date mailed was April 18, 2024, and April 30, 2024, and thereby they also meet ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice, and publication in the newspaper, and all three match. The filing piece has been paid. The endangered species consultation has been received. And finally, the McHenry County Solar Water Conservation District report has been received. This would be NRI number 24-033-4589. I would just like to state for anybody who's never attended a zoning board hearing before kind of how it works. The petitioner will present their testimony to the board, and then we will ask them questions of their testimony. Then staff will ask questions, and if any member of the public has a question based on their testimony, you'll be given three minutes. You'd have to come up to the front, identify yourself and your address, and you have three minutes each to ask questions regarding their testimony. Then after they're all done, then staff will give their report. Members of the board might have questions of them. And then finally, after that's finished, if any member of the public has a statement, in the first section, you're only asking questions, and the last, you can make a statement regarding how you feel about the petition, one way or another, and you'll have three minutes for that as well. So at this time, anyone who feels that they would want to be speaking, whether you're asking a question, or whether you're giving testimony, or making a statement, I'd want to swear you in. So anybody who would want to do that, please raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that, including the petitioner? Do you soundly affirm that the testimony you gave showed me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the petitioner if you can present your testimony. Please introduce yourself and your role at the company.
Thank you, Chair, members of the zoning board, staff. Really appreciate our opportunity to present our special use application. I know much time goes into your review, so really thankful to be here today. My name is Connor Sales. I'm the petitioner behalf of the project, South Union Illinois Solar. I work for Solarstone Development, Minneapolis-based solar development shop. I've been developing solar projects for the last three years. I'm up here with my colleagues, Tori Simonton, Brendan Cohen, and Brendan Urban. Next slide, please. As I said, we're based out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, and we primarily focus on community solar development. This is a project I am talking about today, is a community solar project. Our main focus has been here in the Midwest, so Minnesota and Illinois. We have operational 16 projects, most of those which are in Minnesota at the moment, producing 69 megawatts of power. Just for a better grasp of kind of a megawatt, I like to think of a megawatt, depending on where you are in the country, as being able to power 500 to 1,000 homes. So a five-megawatt project such as this would be between 2,500 and 5,000 single-family homes. Illinois is definitely one of the markets that we have a huge focus on right now. So in the next couple of years, we have 17 projects that we're actively developing here in the state, and that'll be about 60 megawatts. Community solar is nationwide at this point, so we are focused on the Midwest, but we also have 30 projects across New Mexico, New Jersey, Wisconsin, and Pennsylvania in varying stages based on the legislation. Our biggest community solar project up to date did a 10-megawatt facility with the Rochester Public Utility in Minnesota, and the Mayo Clinic is receiving the benefit of that power, and that went online in the spring of 2022. Just a little bit of background on why we're here in Illinois. September of 2021, the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act was passed, which is the reason that I'm here today, definitely giving investment a strong footing in the state. Just some highlights, there's a $40 million grant program, which is going to help expand renewable workforce development. For example, this project will be using all union, Illinois union labor. We frequently talk with WAIUNA, for example, the laborers international, Union of North America, so there will be union jobs on this facility. This project, just to give a little explanation, is a distribution project, so it connects to the distribution grid, not a transmission-level system. So this power is local, and it's going to be with ComEd, ComEdison, and we're delivering the power locally. And as a community solar facility, the subscribers to the facility will receive bill credits at a discounted rate on their bill, and we will be charging for that at a discount. Solar equipment that we're going to be using on this project, we're going to be using a single-axis tracker. We like to use single-axis trackers where possible, when we're in a farm field, for example, where we have the space. We like to use single-axis trackers to increase our yield. So a few years ago, projects were using probably seven acres per megawatt. To now, I'm seeing roughly five acres per megawatt. So the modules are getting more efficient, they're getting larger, we're able to produce more power with less space. So the footprint of the facilities is coming down, which is a benefit for the community as well. We're going to be using sensor technology on these facilities, so they're going to be remotely monitored. So throughout the day, the tracker will be following the sun throughout the day to optimize that efficiency. And these modules are bifacial, so that means we're producing power on the front and the back. One benefit is when there's snow on the ground, we're actually getting a large boost in production off the back end of our panels. So in climates such as Illinois, where there will be snow on the ground, we're going to get a boost in production. In our application, we noted that the trackers will be no more than 12 feet off the ground is the height of the tracker. I believe the ordinance is 20 feet, but for a facility like this, we're only going to need 10 to 12 feet for the height. We will be having a eight-foot cyclone fence around the facility, no barbed wire on that fence for security. I like to highlight that we're not using any concrete or asphalt within the footprint of the project. I will note, we do have a transformer for interconnection with ComEdison, and that will be roughly a 10-by-10 concrete slab for the transformer and electrical equipment, but other than that, we will not be using any concrete. The plan is to drill piles into the soil, so it's very low, it's not very invasive to the footprint of the facility. As far as ground cover, we're going to be planting a low mow, so maybe once or twice a year, we will be sending out a maintenance crew to do some mowing, but this is a native prairie grass mix that is pollinator-friendly that we will be putting on site. It'll be acceptable for the current use of the facility and increase the hydrological features, so this will actually decrease runoff to what the field is currently at the moment. Screening, so on the north end along Hemington Road, we're currently proposing to put evergreen trees along the north end. I believe the ordinance is 500 feet from any residence that requires screening. We do have a residence to the northwest that's roughly 350 feet, so we will be screening along the north end of Hemington Road, and that'll be these evergreens, so they won't be losing leaves, obviously, so we will be able to have a consistent, caniferous border year-long. So that is the plan along the north end of the parcel. I'll go into the site design later. I know we're talking about two parcels for this application, but the current plan contemplates only developing on the southern parcel. I'll go into the reason why in a bit. We get questions about the solar panels. Solar panels have been getting better year over year. I'd like to say that these are attested and safe application. We use these today on hospitals, schools, airports, I believe the building we're in right now has solar panels. The main components being silicon, natural product every day, glass is made of the same compounds. RPV panels are going to have those solar cells, consist of an aluminum frame, there's a glass sheet for the casing, a 12-volt wire, flexi-gas, and cadmium is kind of a component that we find in household batteries. This project is going to be using string inverters. So some of the larger utility-scale projects use what's called the central inverter, that's going to be a much larger box with a larger footprint. For a project of this size, we find that there's a lot of efficiencies to using the string inverters, mostly for maintenance. We're seeing if there was any downtime with our inverter, we could come out with a truck, replace one or two inverters. It would be a very quick replacement. Instead of, if the central inverter goes down, we're kind of looking at a much longer runtime. So this is kind of our, we're going to have 34 string inverters, 350 kilowatts each on this site. That inverter is converting to DC power that we're producing with our solar panels and converting that to AC power, which the grid can use and our everyday appliances at home run on. In the bottom left, that concrete slab is an example of the transformer that we're going to have on site. That'll be along Hemington Road, right along our access road, and that's going to step up our voltage to the 12 KV, or 12,000 volts, three-phase along the road. That is the equipment that we need to get the power to ComEdison. Another main question I get a lot is why we choose a certain site over any other site. There's kind of two things that come to mind. First, we need a willing landowner. So here we have a willing landowner who signed a lease with us for the development on the site. And kind of the main thing that we're always looking for is capacity, and Commonwealth Edison is definitely becoming a lot more saturated than Ameren to the south in Illinois. So we found that there was capacity at the substation, which is near the village of Huntley, about five miles to the east. And typically, we look for three-phase power, so that's between 12 KV, 34.5, and up to 69,000 volts. This is a 12 KV line along Hemington Road, and it is adjacent to the site, so we will not have to build out other than, we're going to have three utility poles on our side of the fence, and ComEd will have three poles on their side of the fence, and that will be connecting to the three-phase right along the road. So from a feasibility standpoint, we kind of had our two variables come together, so this is a very attractive site from a capacity standpoint. So on the site design, provided, we have two parcels, one on the north and one on the south of Hemington Road. These are owned by the Zedonis family currently, and those two parcels add up to about 119 acres. Our solar facility, our design provided is about 27 acres, so that's about 22.6% of the two parcels at the moment. We're going to have a service road for white-duty service trucks and construction that's going to come off of Hemington Road, and the point of interconnection will be based off of that service road as well, which I'll show on the site plan shortly. And then we're meeting all the county ordinance here in McHenry County for 150 feet from nonparticipating residents and 50 feet from all nonparticipating property lines. We do have a participating residence on our southernly parcel, that is our landowner's house that is currently being rented, which is a participating residence. So this is kind of currently what we're planning on developing. We have no infrastructure on the north end, and that is mostly because along the south, around the north end, there is a large wetland that we have preliminarily discovered. This is a kind of a desktop wetland review. So before pulling any building permits, we will be doing a boots-on-the-ground wetland delineation to confirm these wetlands, but we are fairly confident at this time that a large portion of that northern parcel is going to be a wetland, so.
Are you talking about north of Hemington Road?
North of Hemington Road, on the northern parcel.
Could you back up that previous slide? Thank you.
The blue line that you see is the fence line, and the yellow strings that you see are the actual strings of the modules. You're going to have, we're going to have a 50-foot setback, you see on the east, that is from that purple line to our modules. That is the setback required by the county from solar equipment to our nonparticipating parcel line. In the northeast corner, that brown, the light brown line in the very northeast, that is the service road coming into the facility, and that black box is the transformer pad where the electrical transformer will be stepping up the power. It's a little, I apologize, it's a little hard to see, but the green line along the north end of the array, that is the proposed, where the evergreen trees will be shielding the property from deal. You can see the closest nonparticipating residence is to the northwest, there's the three circles with the 150-foot setback from those properties in the northwest corner.
And how about the buildings directly across from the participating residents? That's also participating, but it's not a home?
It is not a home. It is currently used to store farm equipment, it's a pole barn. We don't plan on, like I said, going north of Hemington Road, but our lease contemplates if we were to need to go north of the road, that pole barn may be removed for equipment, but we don't have any plans, and barring any unforeseen circumstances, I think we're going to be able to stay to the south of Hemington Road. Next slide, please. It's just a little bit more of a better view on that north parcel. The light green with the level-one wetland to be verified, that is kind of our constraint and the reason we're staying away from the north parcel. Kind of leaves us, I think it's about 20 acres on the south end of the north parcel that would be conducive for solar development, but we really don't want to break up the arrays into two sides of the road, mostly for aesthetics and also just for construction. It makes sense to all keep it in one parcel. So for this facility, we've been talking to the Zedonis family, and they are aware of drain tile on the facility. So before we come in for a building permit, we will be commissioning a local outfit for a drain tile survey to locate those drain tiles, and we have signed an AEMET agreement, Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement with the Department of Agriculture. So the drain tile survey is very helpful because it helps us find that infrastructure. We can actually design around the infrastructure and where we're driving posts, but we have a requirement to replace any damaged drain tile and bring it back to its former condition if we were to hit any during construction, but that technology's gotten a lot better in the past few years, so we're really able, even with a ton of drain tile, which I don't see on this facility, we're able to drive posts around that with the new technology. We'll also be signing a road use agreement, and we'll also be doing a geotech survey. So before the building permit, we will be kind of seeing the quality of the soil that we plan to drive piles into to make sure it's conducive to the construction, and that'll all be provided to the county before we come in for a building permit. I noted the AEMET agreement, we signed that with the IDOA as of last month in April. We're also required to do a FAA notice criteria with the Federal Aviation, and no further coordination is required. There is no airport infrastructure within the vicinity of the project, so that was This project, it looks like it's going to require a stormwater management plan with McHenry County. That'll be provided before the building permit. In our next stage of development, they will be, like I talked about on the site design, going in to verify the location of those wetlands, we're very precise, and following all required retention and setbacks from those stormwater areas. And the last point, before a building permit is issued, we will be commissioning a decommissioning plan, which will kind of play out the conditions, costs, timelines, and what it looks like to bring this project back to its original condition as it is today. And that concludes my presentation today. I will now hand it over to staff and field any questions you may have.
Okay, so under our use standards for a commercial solar energy facility under the decommissioning, so you'll also comply with whatever requirements the county has as far as bond and letter of credit and all that sort of thing as well?
Yes, we commit to meeting all county requirements for bonding and letter of credit.
And like under safety, there was the damaged solar panels shall be removed, repaired, and replaced within 60 days. You'll comply with that. Otherwise, I think you've covered everything that I've been kind of following along, that I think you've covered everything else under that. So I will open it up for questions, starting on my left.
I don't have any questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can you just explain the relationship between WSB and Solarstone?
WSB is the civil engineering group that we used in conjunction with myself to prepare this application today.
Yet Solarstone is shown as working out of Marco Island, Florida. You referenced Minnesota, so how does that work out?
We have a PO box in Florida that our mail goes to, but we're based out of Minneapolis.
The conditions have certain topical presentations. One is generations of jobs. Did you touch on that in terms of union, but could you expand in terms of type and category as much as you believe this facility would have from construction to maintenance?
Sure, yeah. These solar projects take between four and six months to construct, and I'm seeing for a five-megawatt facility, between 24 and 30 full-time construction jobs during that period. The operational period is kind of, we usually have maybe two trucks come out a month, so there will be some operational jobs created, but the bulk of it is those two dozen construction jobs during the six months of construction.
There's also a topic referred to as tax revenues. Can you speak to that in terms of pre and post?
Yes, so this parcel is currently zoned A1 agricultural. I'm not sure if that, I believe that designation will remain, but the state statute has a formula for how they tax commercial solar facilities. For a five-megawatt facility, depending on the applicable tax rate here in the county, I would estimate between $30,000 and $40,000 of tax revenue per year.
And then the elevation difference between from Hemington's road, if I pronounced that correctly, to the FEMA zone, how much of a fall or drop or change going from north to south?
You don't have those figures in front of me, but I recall it was pretty subtle. We don't foresee a lot of grading on this site. There is that FEMA zone, as you noted, on the south, which we're going to be staying out of and setback from, but the grading on this site is going to be de minimis.
Sorry, to be a little more specific, I just meant in terms of the visual height from the panel from Hemington to the panel, that would be along the FEMA zone, given that you have a 12-foot, so how much of a drop or?
With those evergreen trees along Hemington, we believe that the view shed is going to be, it's going to be minimal, there's going to be minimal impact driving along Hemington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no further questions.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes, sir. You said you were going to have, explain the 118 acres for us, and I heard that you're not going to use the top part, so why are you even bothering to include it? I mean, there's costs involved in just using that much property if you're only going to have the five megawatts, mega, the big, yes, go ahead.
Development, kind of by nature for us, is very uncertain until we really get all of our boots on the ground civil work done. So we're permitting both just for the optionality, just in case there's an unforeseen change in the wetland situation that we would have to come to the north, but I see that as pretty unlikely. These things usually don't change very much between our desktop and our boots-on-the-ground surveys. And we will not be kind of, when we do finish the development, we will kind of, we call it shrink wrapping or defining the actual solar facility, so we will not be maintaining 120 acres. It'll be more in that 25-acre range.
So what happens to the rest of these acreage, it just goes to sea for the duration?
It goes back to whatever the farmer, the landowner was previous, whatever they want to do. It's currently farmland.
So in the part that you're not using, even though it's leased to you, they can still go ahead and do their ag on the rest of the property that you're not going to actually be using?
That's correct. We will not be, we will be releasing the lease on the parcels where the property we're not using.
Okay. 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 And then, so you're going to be mowing twice a year?
Yes, the pollinator mix that we have is growing a little bit slower than the native grass, so we anticipate usually about two mows a year.
Okay, and how many machines will you be using when you're in there mowing, just the one guy?
I'm not sure. I think it's two standard mowers is currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gardner?
Going back to the two parcels, and you're leasing both of them, so you're paying rent on both of them. Who actually pays the property taxes out of that, do you or does the landowner?
The us and the solar project are responsible for the property tax.
Okay, I'm just curious. Now, you were talking about an eight-foot cyclone fence around the entire southern portion, is that right?
That's right.
You're not going to do the northern portion?
No, it'll only be around where we have the modules.
Okay, so that's the only place there would be a fence. In McHenry County, we kind of prefer agricultural fencing, which is the, you know, the wire with the wooden posts and the squares, rather than the, you know, sort of city playground-looking cyclone fence. Okay, so if you could comply with that, that would be really nice. And let's see, let me through that. Now, the string inverters, can you tell me where they would be located on? Now, the string inverters, can you tell me where they would be located on this site? Are they different than a regular inverter that we've been seeing for several years now?
I think in the past, for the most part, this body's probably been seeing the central inverters, but the strings, we're going to have 34 of them. We usually put them more on the interior of the project, where we string together the electrical infrastructure of the different strings of modules, so they won't be on the outside, they'll be more on the interior of the facility.
And they're inverters just like the central inverters, or are they different in nature? Do they sound the same? Do they look the same?
They do, they're just much smaller. One person could lift this piece of equipment.
Okay, so if you were standing in the center of the site, you would probably hear a louder hum than?
That's right. It's, I believe it's about 30 decibels, which is akin to a kind of suburban neighborhood running a refrigerator. You won't be able to hear this from the road.
Yeah. And it's, in my, in my little chart here, a library is about 40 decibels, so that sounds pretty quiet to me. So we had a couple more. Okay, you said the residence that's within that southern site is occupied by the landowner or is rented out by the landowner?
It's being rented out by the landowner.
Okay. And so are you complying with the setback buffer around the residence there, or are you going right up to it?
It is 50, 50 feet from that participating residence.
Okay. And they're okay with that?
Yes, the landowner is okay with that.
Okay. Then, just for the benefit of the people and the public, can you please kind of go over the, the ins and outs of the discounts for the subscribers? You know, how do you subscribe and, you know, what kind of discounts can you look for? Where does it come from, et cetera?
Yeah, so in Illinois, Community Solar, I'm seeing between 10% and 20% discounts. It's not location-specific, so anyone with a ComEdison account number and bill can subscribe to Community Solar facility. I think now we're seeing more of it, you can subscribe to a specific project upon request, but this would kind of go into a greater pool of ComEd projects that you'd be able to receive those bill credit discounts. So if you produce 100 kilowatt hours, our facility produces 100 kilowatt hours, your share is 2%, you get those bill credits directly on your utility bill, and you would see those discounts directly on the utility bill, and then the project company would send a bill for the discount, so 80% of the credits.
Okay, so I'm still a little confused about that. They would still get a bill from ComEd?
That's right.
And it would show a discount of, let's say, 20%? And they're still going to get a bill for you, from you, for 80%?
That's right.
It sounds like they're going to be paying more for electricity?
We're only charging, we're, the project company is invoicing for the bill credit less the discount, so 80% of the bill credit would be what they're paying for the power.
So they're, they're paying two entities then, ComEd and your company? Is that the way that works?
That's my understanding.
Okay, but they still will have a lowered price for their electricity?
Yes, they'll be receiving that discount directly on their ComEd bill, because they'll still be getting, using the public infrastructure from ComEd. We'll just be invoicing for the generation in a given month.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's really clear, because it's just, it's very confusing how it's set up. I mean, everybody's used to getting one bill, and if there's a discount on it, you go yay. But when you get a bill with a discount and then you get another bill, it's like, am I paying more?
And I'll have to check, but I believe in other states, we have consolidated billing, so it's all one, one bill. There's not two bills. I believe Illinois might have been moving that direction, but I have to check on that.
Okay.
It might already be in place. I will follow up on that one.
Okay, and I think that that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my question has been answered already, so I'd like to pass to Mr. Juris.
Thank you for your courtesy. I've been waiting for this. I'm going to repeat one of Mary's questions. On the north parcel, which looks like it's a square 40, you want a conditional use permit on that also. So you want a conditional use on 118 acres. Is that correct? She asked, what are your plans for that? Do your plans are to not use it?
The plan is to not use it. We'd like to stay on the south end.
So it kind of, if your, if your plan is to not use it, it kind of skews your numbers of 22.6% in solar panels. If you just eliminate that, you're looking at the southern 80, which has your panels about closer to half, not 22.6.
That's correct.
So now, once the special use permit is granted, it puts a higher value on that land. Are you willing to pay the increased taxes on that 40 that you're not going to use?
Yes, the project company will be paying all of the property taxes for the facility.
Kind of seems like a huge waste of money, doesn't it?
We're actually going to be kind of defining the boundary of what we're using, so we're only going to be leasing where we're actually putting the modules.
You're only going to lease what's in the fence?
That's right.
But you're going to pay the taxes on the north 40 because you raised the value of it, because now it's a special use.
My understanding is we would not, because we would only be leasing to define.
I understand what you're going to be leasing, but you're causing the landowner to change the zoning on his and get the conditional use, which will raise his taxes.
My understanding is we're not changing the zoning from A1. It'll remain agricultural.
With the conditional use permit, that they could put a number of other businesses in. So the conditional use permit rides with the land, not what's inside the fence.
No, they can't put any other businesses on this. This is only for solar.
Is this your first project in McHenry County?
It is not. We have.
Where's the next closest project to this one?
I'd have to ask one of my colleagues.
Of course.
Could be the Harvard location, which we got permitted last year.
Harvard, Illinois, okay. Are you guys willing to pay to move that center pivot irrigation system that's on the property?
Yes.
For the dismantled move and digging up all the pipe and electric? You're going to pay for that move?
I'm negotiating that lease.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to get sworn in and identify yourself if you want to speak.
Because there is agriculture infrastructure on this property and a center pivot irrigation system, which is tens of thousands of dollars. Okay, maybe it's not worth what a solar panel's worth, but it's been there and it does produce award-winning yields. This is what's known as dream. I'm just saying, who's moving the infrastructure?
I'd probably have to ask my colleague to testify on this.
No further questions.
I have one question regarding the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. It sounds like Blanding's Turtle is in that area, and that might be something that you might want to raise your fence a little bit, just so that they can go in and out easily. That's where the agricultural type fence is a little bit easier to, for this area versus a cyclone fence.
Can you propose a four to six inch gap at the bottom of the fence for?
Oh, there is, okay.
For animals to migrate.
Okay, that should be great then. That's all the questions I have. Staff, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. For the access road that's proposed there, it looks like there's an existing farm access just to the east of that. I don't know if you've had any conversations with the township highway commissioner, but do you know if there will be any issue with having three separate driveways on that property? And if there were, would you be able to utilize any existing access points or?
We've not had that conversation to date, but I don't see any issues if there's a concern about multiple roads.
Okay, because I know some townships only allow a certain number per frontage, so I wasn't sure if that was going to be an issue, but, and then the only other question I had was on, so your exhibit that was in your slides showing the screening along the road, the site plan that we have shows along the east and west sides of the property coming back from the road 500 feet as well. Is that still being proposed as part of the vegetative screening?
Yes, it does curl on the east and the west.
Okay, all right. I think that's the only question.
Ms. Dunn, you have another question?
I, I need to go back just for my head. It seems problematic to me, but not necessarily on this level, that if you release them from the lease they've given you because you're not going to use the property, the property's still going to have a conditional use on it, which means to my mind that you would be paying taxes on that whole property. But if you released the property, then the owner's going to have to pay it. At least that's my mind, and I don't know if that's true or not. Are you willing to take on that burden if I'm wrong?
In my experience, we would only be getting taxed on the direct footprint of the equipment.
Okay.
So, and the zoning won't be changing from agriculture, so I don't see.
Correct, correct. I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying that though, if you're leasing it, that lease is for 118 acres, since you're not going to use that acreage and you're bringing it down to 25 or so because of what you're doing, that's a lot of taxation that somebody's got to cover, and you're saying you're going to cover it.
Our lease mandates that we pay all the property taxes.
Got it. Thank you.
Kim, do you have any clarification on any of that?
The only thing I would clarify is that in response to Tom's comment about the conditional use on that property, is that my understanding from the tax assessor is that they're taxing based on the use of the property. So if that northern portion, even though it has a conditional use permit, the zoning overlay district is not going to impact the taxes, it's how it's being used. So if it continues to be farmed, that northern portion, it's a, it's a separate PIN number should continue to be taxed as agriculture. That's my understanding.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Carter?
Sorry, don't, don't want to get my board this confusion, but going forward, if either you or another company chose to put arrays, and this is staff, they want to jump in on this, arrays north of that roadway, would the conditional use have to be amended? Or are we looking at the conditional use as the illustration has been submitted? And if that's not your understanding, then?
Yes, if, if the site plan were to significantly change, like adding panels to the north side of the road, you would have to come back through this process for a conditional use amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so at this time, any member of the public, if you have a question. Now is your time to come up. I have a three-minute timer. If you have any questions of his testimony, you can come up now and ask your questions. Is anyone interested in asking a question? Okay, sir, come in.
Where do you want me to stand?
And just, yeah, there's fine. And then just your name and address, and then go ahead.
So I'm Ross Fruin, and we own 200 acres. I'm the one with the center pivot, and I've been farming the property for 15 years or more, ever since she bought it, but before that, we've been farming it for 40 years. A couple things, so is there a, is there a limit on a percentage of the land that you can put solar? Like, is it 20% of, so say you got a 100-acre field, is there a law saying you can only put 20% solar, 25% solar, 30%? Is there any law on that or no?
I'm not aware of anything in the county or the state.
Okay.
Can you answer this?
Yeah, I can just clarify. There's an overall impervious surface coverage maximum for the parcel of 50%.
No.
And the panels are not considered impervious due to the native vegetation below them, so it'll just be the posts and the concrete pad.
Okay.
And the driveway.
So, so then we can back up, so I have a fairly good relationship with the landowner with the donations, and before I put the center pivot in and before I put underground pipe in and underground electric and did all the infrastructure on her property, I talked to her several times about purchasing the property. She said she would sell, she would love to sell it to me, but she wanted to wait till she passed away. She's like, I'd rather have my kids sell it to you for tax purposes and blah, blah, blah. So basically, I went and did, you know, spent $80,000 putting, you know, putting the pivot in and doing all this infrastructure, underground pipe and all this stuff, and then out of the blue, she kind of changes her mind. I know it's a sob story, you know, staying up here on a soapbox, but basically, you know, it was, it was a trust agreement, a word of like, okay, you're going to say, hey, my kids will sell you this property, don't worry about it, put on the center pivot, put in the pipe, put in all the stuff.
What's your question, sir? You got to get to the question. You're asking the question, the petitioner or the testor?
Okay, well, I guess the question is, there's no recourse, there's no, I guess there's no recourse for somebody's word. I guess that's, I guess it's, it's a void question, because I believe there's, you know.
I would say that that's something you have to deal with the landowner on. This is just a zoning hearing for whether this property can be zoned for a solar farm.
Right.
You know, and your concern is with the landowner.
Yeah.
If it's any consolation, some of these just don't go through.
Yeah, right. And there, another thing, it is Class A soil, which I guess there's a law on the books that's supposed to be passed at some point, but that's not passed yet, so. And I understand, I think you guys can't vote these down anyway, so it's kind of a, it's a pretty tough situation we're in, and I just wanted to voice that we've farmed and been there for, you know, 60 years, all my life, and the parents too, so I guess that's about it for me.
Okay, does anyone else have questions? And again, this is questions about his testimony. You'll have three minutes later to give comments, but this is questions.
Yeah, the question is, I think it's going to.
Your name and address first.
Name is Roseland, address is 14001 Hemmingson Road in Hubble, Illinois. So this, this is industrial construction. You're building a power plant. Okay, so building a power plant near my home devalues my home. What are you doing about that? What is the county doing about that? What are you guys doing to make sure?
You're asking the petitioner a question now. This is your opportunity to ask him a question about his testimony.
How are you going to compensate me for the devaluation of my property?
In rural use, we've had a couple, had multiple studies that we don't see any devaluation of the property.
I don't care if it's studies, I'm talking about the reality. Okay, so the reality is that the value of the property, you're doing this thing, you got a cyclone.
He answered, he's answering the question, sir.
He didn't answer the question sufficiently.
Yes, he did. He said, told you the study.
So whatever his opinion is, is the answer?
He's answering the question.
Based his answers on his studies, and that's.
What are the facts that you have that demonstrate for me factually? What do you have that you can present to me that demonstrates that my property is being devalued? Where's that information?
I would be happy to connect with you and provide.
No, I need, no, because I got three minutes. So you should have thought that through.
No, you have three minutes to ask your questions. We have, yes, sir, go ahead. And then again, your name and you're with the company.
I'm for Simonton, so I.
And, and you swear the truth you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but.
I think probably the best empirical evidence that would support that is that Stevenson County, which is in proximity to the ComEd service territory as well, the entire county board and the ZBA did a study in October of 2022, and the findings from that were that there was no impact to any property values with any adjacent landowner. So that information is public information, and it's at the Stevenson County, excuse me, Stevenson County Planning and Board information.
Okay, can you write that down on a piece of paper, and I'll just take it with me, because I don't be able to make contact with it.
Yeah, I'll, we can give you the person you call.
Yeah, let me do it.
Sure.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay.
Ralph Dodden, 6914 Menching Road. I'm still confused about taking a conditional permit on 120 acres and only planning to do 25. Why, why not do it on 25? I, I, just, this blows my mind. Why would you do something like that?
Just the uncertain nature of kind of our studies and our civil at the moment. Understand that we want to stay on the south end, but if we're recruited for any reason during our engineering phase for diligence, we will kind of come to the north to the extent we're not in any wetlands. So this gives us the option to use both parcels, even though we don't plan on using the north end.
So if you go to the north end, does the. does the committee have to reapprove a change? So you have to come back here anyway. So I still don't understand why you're looking at this big piece of land and only to use a portion if you have to come back here anyway for any changes? I'm confused.
We don't understand it either.
I believe the application also included a platyp survey for the entire acreage. So if you were going to do just the area where the panels were going, a new survey would have needed to be prepared for just the south end. I don't know if that weighed in on the decision to do that at all, but that was part of the application as well.
So...
The surveyed area was 120 acres.
I understand that, but so if they find it not suitable to stay on the south side, they have to go to the north side, they have to come back here, go through this process again?
If it's substantial changes, then yes, it's...
Substantial.
Was substantial.
But it says to me, you know, maybe I could just, I'm just gonna stop this so that if you want to ask questions later. So it looks like at the south end of your panels, you're kind of really impacted by maybe wetlands on the south side of the south parcel. And so if it turns out that that boundary encroaches too far onto your panels, that's why you would need to go to the north?
Yes, I think that's, that would be the most likely event to go to the north.
Because right now, you have enough room, but if it turns out that wetland on the south side comes a little bit more north, then in order to accomplish your goal, you're gonna have to put a few panels on the north?
Yes, we're trying to stay at that five-megawatt facility size. So we will be presenting a new site plan.
Does that help?
Yeah. So, and staying out of the wetlands, I guess what's the reasoning staying out of the wetlands?
Because they're wetlands.
With the stormwater permits process that we have to go through, as well as insurance is increased when we're in floodplains.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm Carol Fruin, I'm Ross Fruin's wife, and I live, I'm 14015 Hemmingson Road, right down the road. My question is, because I do happen to be the lawn maintenance girl at my home, if you're mowing twice a year, are you familiar with Merstail and Waterhem?
I am not.
Okay, those are two really invasive weeds that are like really hard to kill. And my husband really doesn't like weeds at all. But anyways, I'm just a little bit concerned. The other places that you've done this at in Minnesota...
Maybe you can explain to her the pollinator species.
What?
Maybe he can explain more to you, the pollinator species, and why that's the seed mix that is planted under these panels.
No, I really don't, I'm not really concerned. I mean, you could, okay. But my biggest question is, the places that you've done this previously are, is it working just to mow it two times a year and the other residents around are okay with that?
Yes, and we have a very large incentive to make sure that we're keeping all the vegetation in order because anything that comes and shades our panels is lost production. So it is very important to us that the facility is clean, orderly, and that we're not having overgrown weeds because that decreases our values.
So how do you guys maintain that? Or who watches it? Or do you have someone come and monitor it once a week?
All of the monitoring is done remotely. So if there's ever, we have regularly scheduled maintenance and mowings, and we do have people local in the area, so...
And do you have pictures? Maybe you could show us of those other locations so we could see what they look like, like two years in?
Yeah, I would be happy to provide photos of that.
Yep, I'd like to see that.
Can you explain a little bit about the pollinator species and the whole goal of that? You know, why it's not mowed more than twice a year when you want to have flowers and everything for, you know, and get those points? Can you explain a little bit how that works?
Yeah, the IDNR recommends that we use these seed mixes. Obviously, it increases the quality of the, decreases runoff, water runoff, but also allows for bee habitat and other pollinators. And my understanding is they just don't grow as quickly. So we're not, that's why we're only having to mow it once or twice a year. It's not, it's not gonna be native grass that's gonna grow much quicker. So it kind of gives us multiple benefits from a hydrological standpoint as well as maintenance and pollinator habitat, obviously.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I think this is your name, and if not, you have to correct me.
Okay.
Just to go to that same thing about the monitoring, whether the height and so forth. So is your system discreet enough to note if one or more modules are offline?
One or two, I don't believe, would be...
So how many in a string before your system would detect a surface call? Because you're putting out 1,200 modules.
Right.
So how many of them in your system?
Monitoring, in my experience, is by inverter. So we were, had an expect, we have a production estimate of what we expect. So if we're falling short of those, we will be sending out a maintenance truck to understand if it's with the inverter, if it's with the modules. Because we're very incentivized to make sure we're producing what we expect. So any decrease, we'll be coming out and monitoring that.
And one more. And that incentivized means that Comet has an expectation of your delivery? And so failure to, a string to deliver brings you a cash loss?
We have requirements to deliver what we're promising.
Thank you, and thank you for your generous...
Sure. Okay, we'll take the report from Steph.
Okay, so the subject property is Zoned A1 Agriculture District and is also surrounded by agricultural zoning. As was mentioned previously, there is the A2 residential site just to the west of the northern parcel, but sufficient distance from the array and including the screening between that. Surrounding land uses as well, as well as the subject property is all agricultural. Future land use designation is also agricultural. This was the platyp survey that we're mentioning here, so that was for the entire site, and that encompasses 120 acres. I've really gone through the site plan there. I did want to just mention to the public, there was questions about the maintenance. So just so that you are aware, we do, as staff, require an annual monitoring maintenance plans to be submitted from the development companies so that we can make sure that the seed mix is appropriate, that the amount of time that it's being here for and mowed is appropriate. And then staff does go out once a year to make sure that, you know, that there aren't weeds growing everywhere, that it's the appropriate type of plants that are growing there. So it is monitored, it's not just left alone all year. Just if that helps you at all, that that is part of the process there. I believe that all of the standards for the state and the county have been met on this project site, so we have no issues with the approval.
Is there any questions by the board?
Thank you. Have we received any comment from any municipality or township or special unit of government on this project?
No, we have not.
Just for clarification, who is the maintenance jurisdiction for Hemmingson Road?
It's Grefton Township.
And Mearsham Road, if I pronounced it right?
I believe that's also Grefton Township.
Thank you. Thank you, Mearsham.
Sure. So I have one question. So the, for what they're going to do, there is, they're talking about five mega...
Megawatts?
Megawatts? And things change if you go over that five megawatts, right? I mean, certain requirements restrictions...
That's something with the state, right? That you have to keep it under...
Yes, for the state program, five megawatts is the cap.
The maximum, yeah. So as long as, as they're within that five megawatts, it's not how many rays or whatever, but it's the output of the...
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Facility is what is going to talk about how big that facility is actually going to be? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, yeah. And again, that's the cap, so we wouldn't see it going beyond that.
And my other question is, when these two parcels belong to this lady, and so she gave, I'm not talking to him, I'm talking to you, because you've got the survey for the whole 120 acres. And so that, that can be planned on that kind of land and figure out where it's going to be because they wouldn't have known that when they leased the property? Is that possible?
It is possible. We've seen some other projects. There was actually one on Route 120 last year, I believe, that was about a similar project size, and they were only developing on the south side of 120 as well. That other portion was just remaining as farmland. So we have seen that before. And like I said, I believe that the taxes are gonna be based just solely on...
So the precedent kind of has already been set for this kind of thing?
We have seen it, yeah.
You've seen it before?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Steph? Okay, then at this time, we'll take any statements by the members of the public. If anyone would like to make a statement on the project, you have three minutes.
You know, I just, I don't know if this will work.
You have to come up again and state your name and...
I think it was you that made the suggestion about a different type of fence.
It was me.
Was it you that, it was you? Okay, so whoever made that suggestion, that would be a significant step in the right direction with respect to value of the property, so to speak. A cyclone fence is kind of like something you see in a prison. That's not very attractive. So if the suggestion that was made by the board with respect to that fence was something you could adhere to, that would be, I don't know if that's a statement or a question, but it's...
It's your pick. That's perfect, yeah, it's great, it's great. Yes, sir.
Ross Fruin again. We didn't talk about the end plan. Is it a 25-year lease or 30-year lease?
We have a 25-year lease with an extension. Useable life is between 30 and 40 years, 35 and 40 years.
Okay. And then, so what would be the end? So with 35 years, what would be the best-case scenario to happen for you guys or the property? After 35 years, what do you think would happen? Or what's most likely to happen in 35 years?
At that time, we would either move to decommission the facility and return it to what it is today, or at that time, if solar is still as feasible as it is today, we might have to come back in for another round of zoning. But I believe it's up to the landowner's discretion if they would like to continue the solar facility.
And this may not apply, but what, so if the landowner sells the property between, in the middle of this lease, then what's the scenario?
The lease would still remain with us. Who would be paying the lease payments, do you want to change?
Okay. I guess that's it.
Anyone else?
So I'm Carol Fruin again, the farmer's wife. My statement is this. I just want you to know that you're using Class A farmland that has a center pivot on it, that's been, has drain tile in it, has won the State of Illinois Yield Contest. Yep, that was noted in Springfield. And that's the property that you're taking out of all the land to choose from. That's the one you're choosing. And that's my statement.
Are there any other statements? Okay, do you have a closing statement, sir?
I just really appreciate all the comments and conversation here today. No further questions, but planning on constructing this facility between the end of this year and 2026. We're still working with Commonwealth Edison, but things are looking good, and we're excited to move forward with the project.
Okay, so at this time, we will close the hearing portion of this project and we'll move on to the voting portion of the hearing. Again, this is for application 2024-022. Applicant, South Union, Illinois Solar, for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. We have some proposed conditions, I'll go through them. Number one, the conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4 of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, site development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan prepared by Solarstone and WSB Incorporated, dated March 20th, 2024, and received by the Department of Planning and Development on March 21, 2024, attached. Number three, the decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as in whole. If any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months, that portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County Stormwater Management Permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drainage tiles shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, a detailed landscape plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Pollinator Scorecard Standards and Land Management Practices shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of construction building permit. Number six, fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electrical Code as applicable. The use of barbed wire is prohibited. Setting fence posts in concrete is prohibited except for gate posts and where otherwise required for stability. Number seven, recommendations made by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in their February 20th, 2024 letter to the applicants with regard to protected resources in the vicinity of the project location shall be followed. Number eight, all requirements of McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance 16.56.030.PP as amended, subject to State of Illinois Public Act 102-1123 and Public Act 103-0586 shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. Number nine, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Are there any other proposed conditions?
I would like to propose an amendment to number six if it's possible to specify that the fencing be agricultural fencing.
I'll second that. Discussion?
I think that, I think I brought this up once before, and I can't remember if it was successful or not, but I think it should be in our condition so that that is something that is kind of standard for this site and other sites. For consistency, yes.
I agree.
As a subject.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Without giving direction, if an exhibit of that type could be available to an applicant so we don't have to spend time searching out squares, posts, and so forth, then they would know that example for us.
I think you're probably pretty aware with the agricultural-type square fencing.
We're happy to provide that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And staff, Michelle, if it's okay?
I believe so. If there's any issue with adding that, if they feel it's more restrictive than the state allows or the state's attorney's office would let us know, but I believe that that is okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. This is to amend condition number three.
Six.
I'm sorry, condition number six.
I...
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call by name. Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
Mr. Koenig?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so the amendment passes. So at this time, I would take a motion, or motion to approve the conditions. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Gartner, seconded by Mr. Schnabel to approve the conditions. Any discussion?
No.
Then I'll call for the vote. Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Jurz?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Yes.
Mr. Koenig?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so the conditions are approved. Six to... And I'll vote yes, so the conditions are approved, six to zero, or I'm sorry, seven to zero. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the petition, so. So moved. So to approve?
To approve.
It's been moved by Ms. Gartner, seconded by Ms. Donner. Discussion, Ms. Gartner?
This property is 118.88 acres, that all of which will be used on south sides of Hemmingson Road and adjacent to the intersection of Hemmingson and Mending Roads. I believe the standards have been met for this project. As everyone is aware, we really are, are pretty much obligated to vote yes on any projects that do meet the standards. And as far as solar farms, I think that this is a passive use. I think it is something that, I'm not going to say our county welcomes many solar farms as we can get, but it is a use that is, is good, it's, it preserves our farmland, it's not, it's, it doesn't contaminate the land as other uses might. And sometimes these work out and sometimes they don't. So I am in favor.
Mr. Cozen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As the record has been presented and testimony given, I'll be in favor of the application.
Mr. Schnabel.
I'll, I'll vote for the application.
Mr. Jurz.
My record on these is probably at least 50% in favor, as most of you already know. This is the first one in how many years I've been on this board that had agricultural infrastructure of very, very expensive nature, center pivot. This is the first one, to my knowledge, that we've ever voted on that had this much infrastructure in the ground where you're taking it out of ag production and putting it into solar. I think the figures are skewed a little bit with 118 acres and are only considering the northern half of the southern parcel, which is the cream of the crop of dirt, pretty much commonly known as dream dirt. It's award-winning yields recognized by the State of Illinois in Springfield, and therefore I vote no.
Oh, we're not voting, we're just taking comments right now, but.
That's my comments. They ask me later for the vote.
Ms. Donner.
Again, I find the whole taxing issue kind of problematic, but that's not the issue that we're voting on. This is, is it a land use? Is it a good land use? The dream may be something that's going to be even better once this is decommissioned and those, the native plants that are then in there. I can't, I can't speak to whatever it is that, that has a pivot. I know what it is. That's, that, I can't, as much as that makes a difference, I can't have it make a difference in my vote, so I will be voting for it.
Mr. Koenig.
I would vote in favor as well with just a couple of comments. Based upon the materials that we've been provided, this project is not going to have any impact on a potential wetlands. It's not going to impact any environmentally sensitive area, at least with the additional plantings that are supposed to be on the property. It should improve water flow off the property, improve what is a sensitive aquifer recharge area. That this land score may be greater than 81. Unfortunately, Public Act 102, 1123 doesn't draw a distinction between the quality of land that a petitioner proposes to put a solar farm on. In that respect, our hands are tied. So given those comments, I would vote in favor as well.
I would agree with the comments of Mr. Koenig. You know, it's, it's really tough because of the infrastructure that's on there, but again, the state standards being what they are, if, if, if this project meets them, you know, the issue with the irrigation system is between the current tenant and the landowner, really not with the solar project itself. And, you know, I, I feel bad for the person who invested that money, who now, if the, the landowner has decided to go into a lease with a solar farm, but that's not the issue before us. But the, the issue of the soil, the nice thing about a solar farm is that at any time if this is decommissioned for any reason, that solar power is no longer appropriate, those, all those posts are pulled out and, and that beautiful soil is still there, it can easily go back into row crop production. It's not like any type of other production or any other type of development that then ruins that soil. This maintains that soil, it's right at the surface, it's not disturbed except for post going in. And so when this is no longer a solar farm, that soil will be there to produce for the world. So for that, I'm grateful for with these solar farms and I think it needs the standards in our ordinance and so I'm in favor of the request. So at this time, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Gartner.
Yes.
Mr. Cozen.
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel.
Yes.
Mr. Jurz.
No.
Ms. Donner.
Yes.
Mr. Koenig.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so this, so go to the county board for the six to one vote approving. At this time, the hearing is closed.
No, no, no. He's doing well. That's the error. No. They're getting better. We have something coming hard.
Obviously, I, I told you.
Can't always enjoy the sun.
Yes, yes, and it was good. They're all good.